Let's leave this.
I just apply, United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's up?
Trusty Trombley, here. Trusty McFederich.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrick.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Let's do the important stuff first. Let's swear in.
You can do that.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Well, I found out earlier when I was looking at the paper.
We got your little four years.
Do your hands. I, Amy Garrick.
I, Amy Garrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will substitute, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee for two years.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for two years.
According to the best viability.
According to the best of my ability today. Can't say what tomorrow will bring. Here?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more, and then we can move on.
My back to the.
I, Thomas Trombley.
I, Thomas Trombley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I left out the word village before trustee in Constitution before New York State.
So now let's go do it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you were just conversing. I thought you said that way.
Okay, things are a little bit out of order here tonight. Make a motion to approve the meeting. The minutes of the March 12th, 2018 meeting.
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
You all have them?
Yep.
Okay. I guess everybody was here?
No.
Nope. Trusty Garrick was excused. Any discussion here? Petitions, deletions? Need more time? This is no further discussion. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
At one abstention, motion carries. We still got a few minutes here. It's seven o'clock. We'll start the regular board meeting. We have the approval of the minutes, presentation, petitions, communications, general question period.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go to your organizational meeting.
Oops.
Please.
Okay. Need a motion to open the organizational meeting?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, organizational meeting will now start.
You got the water?
I've got a beautiful cup top so you can keep my mouth liquefied. Organizational meeting, April 2nd, 2018. Mayor's appointments. Following appointments were offered by Mayor Martin, Thomas Maignan, B., and is hereby appointed Village Attorney for the term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the retainer set by the annual budget appropriation. Mary Sousa said, B., and is hereby appointed Deputy Clerk for the term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Delicker, B., and is hereby appointed Superintendent of Public Works for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Just waiting for a comment, but we're just moving on. Michael Tatro, B., and is hereby appointed Fire, Building Codes, and Zoning Enforcement Officer for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Juanita Munoz, B., and is hereby appointed Records Access Manager for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at no salary. Mary Sousa, B., and is hereby appointed Registrar of Village Statistics for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. James Robbers, Robbins, B., and is hereby appointed to the Planning Board for a term of five years, expiring April 3rd, 2023, at no salary. Keith Cutter, B., and hereby appointed to the zoning board as an alternate for a term, five years, expiring April 3rd, 2023. Have a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mayor's Committee appointment designations, April 2nd, 2018, April 1st, 2019. The following appointments were offered by Mayor Martin, Deputy Mayor Janet McFederich, Water and Sewer Commissioner Thomas Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Street Commissioner Kim Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFederich, Equipment Tool Commissioner Amy Garrick, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFederich, Building Property Commissioner Thomas Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Amy Garrick, Parks Recreation Commissioner Amy Garrick.
Is it Kim? And you said Tom? Building and...
Sorry, Building. Building Property Commissioner Kim. Don't throw things at me. Don't judge. Deputy Commissioner Amy. Parks Recreation Commissioner Amy Garrick, Deputy Commissioner Janet McFederich, Personnel Commissioner Janet McFederich, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Harassment Committee Member Kim Trombley, Harassment Committee Member Janet McFederich, Shared Services Commissioner Thomas Trombley, Deputy Commissioner Kim Trombley, Insurance Commissioner Amy Garrick, Planning Board Liaison Thomas Trombley, Zoning Board Liaison Gregory Martin, Champlain Fire District Liaison Gregory Martin, Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals Clark Curtick, Vice Chairperson of the ZBA Peter Visconti, Chairperson of the Planning Board Keith Cutter, Vice Chairperson of the Planning Board Norman Kozlowski, Budget Officer Gregory Martin, Recreation Committee Janet McFederich. Have a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Board appointments. The following appointments were offered by the Board of Trustees. Claire Clark and Marie Dupree, B., and hereby appointed inspectors of election for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation, with Marie Dupree as chairperson. Beverly Maynard, B., and is hereby appointed Village Historian for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Kimberly McGoldrick, B., and is hereby appointed Recreation Director for a term of one year, expiring April 1st, 2019, at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this one, Board designation, official newspaper. We see a line drawn through there, but I think we'll keep the Sun.
Yours is the only one that has the line.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, we'll keep the Sun as official newspaper as well as the press. Press Republican, Plaisberg, New York, and the Sun Community News, Elizabeth Davinger, B., and are hereby designated the official newspapers of the Village of Champlain during the year April 2nd, 2018, through April 1st, 2019. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Village Board meeting scheduled, the second Monday night of each month. Excuse me, B., and is hereby designated as the official meeting night, Village Board during the year April 2nd, 2018, through April 1st, 2019. At the time, B. at 6:30 PM, Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies, therefore, thereof, thereby, officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said, meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Have a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Boards of Appeal, meeting schedule, the second Wednesday night of each month, B., and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Zoning Board of Appeals during the year, April 2nd, 2018, through April 1st, 2019, and the time, B. at 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 1104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, the said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Planning Board meeting schedule. Planning Board meeting schedule, the third Wednesday night of each month, B., and is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Planning Board during the year April 2nd, 2018, through April 1st, 2019, and the time, B. at 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolutions be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said, meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approves. It is approved. 2019-2020 organizational meeting. The annual organizational meeting, set for the 2018-2019 official year.
April 4th day.
And for the various appointments and committees, B., and is hereby scheduled for April 1st, 2019, at 6:30 in the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Motion to approve?
That should be 2019 through 2020. The first line of that.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor.
2019.
2019-2020. Okay? Annual organizational meeting is set for the 2019-2020 official year. Scheduled for April 1st, 2019, at 6:30 Village Office. Need a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Youth Commission, the village shall continue its participation in and with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Program and with the Clinton County Youth Bureau as a member of said countywide youth organization. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Village Policies, Board of Trustees reviewed the following, following village policies: Investment Policy, Procurement Policy, Personnel Policy, Rules of Procedures for Public Meetings, and finally Code of Ethics. I know there's some things that we need to probably look at a little bit and make some adjustments, but we can do those at a further meeting. Motion to approve Village Policies?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution for Payment of Claims. Whereas, Board of Trustees, the Village of Champlain is determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas, all such claims shall be presented at the next regular board meeting of audit, and whereas, the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claim shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claim shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Village of Trustees. Why are we reading that again? Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution for Mileage Reimbursement, whereas, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Champlain is determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use the personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of 55 cents per mile. Section 2, resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution for Official Bank Depositories, whereas, the Board of Trustees has determined the village law, number 4-40412, parentheses, 3, parentheses, 2, requires the designation of banks or trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees designate the following institutions as depositories of all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes during the year April 2nd, 2018, to April 1st, 2019. TD Bank, Shazie Branch Office, Key Bank of New York, NA Champlain Branch Office, Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York, Key Trust Company, Albany, New York, USDA Rural Development, Ithaca, New York, and Champlain National Bank, Champlain Branch Office. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this resolution?
I think we need all the banks.
I think we need that.
That are available in the whole North Country.
Oh, yeah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Standard Work Day Report Resolutions. We resolved that the Village of Champlain hereby established the following as standard work days for elected and appointed officials, and will report the following days worked to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by those officials to the clerk of this body. We have three. We have Kim, Juanita, and Mike Delicker. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion here? We just did this thing the last month. This is for the, we're supposed to do it every year, so it's just to try and catch up here a little bit. Okay? If there's any, no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We've improved the investment, we've improved procurement, we've improved personnel. We don't have to deal with union negotiations until March of 2020. And this is last year's. Okay? Is that it?
Yeah.
Motion to come out of the organizational meeting?
Somewhat.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to go back to regular meeting?
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is it seven?
No.
Okay. Organizational meeting, seven o'clock. We get here, regular board meeting starts now. Okay. We've had the approval of the minutes, presentation of petitions, communications, general question period for members of the, members of the community. Mr. Tatro is not here tonight. A report from the mayor, other than I'm going to meet with a town official tomorrow, no, Wednesday at 11 o'clock, to discuss water rates. That's, that's all I have to report. This is just to keep the meeting moving along a little bit quicker. If that's okay.
That's fine, Mayor.
Okay? Trusty McFederich, we'll start here.
All I really have are the three big events that are taking place this month. So as a reminder, the cooking class is on Saturday at 2:00 at the meeting house, focusing on casseroles. Slow Art Day is April 14th, 1 to 3. Our Arbor Day celebration is April 22nd, which is also Earth Day, and that will be a village cleanup in the morning and some activities at the playground, planting trees in the afternoon. And I'm also looking for people who would like to be part of the tree committee. And I think that's all I have.
Good. Good.
I was in touch again with the, the office manager at St. Mary's regarding the use of the field. And what they said was, and actually Father Lewis said it in another meeting I was at, that, you know, they would be interested in this, but they need to go through Augensburg and see what the insurance entails, and they really can't say much right now because they don't know what the construction is going to look like and how far it's going to go, and...
When do they anticipate starting? Do they know? Do they have a start date?
I don't think they have a start date.
Yeah? Okay. Well, we can, we can provide them with insurance documents. That's no issue.
Well, I think it's concerning their insurance.
When did you, when did you have the meeting?
It's whatever soup, whatever soup night was. That's when Father...
Lot of weeks ago.
Okay, so I talked to Laura since then.
Okay. And she said?
The 24th. Is it the 24th, Greg? It's the last week.
Yeah.
I think it was on the 24th that she called, and Father said he sees no reason why we can't use the fields. They're looking forward to the fields being used again. They spoke with Paul Seymour regarding construction, and it should have nothing to do, the equipment shouldn't have anything to do with the fields. And they need a certificate of insurance listing them and the Diocese of Augensburg on it as well.
There you go.
See how things change over time.
Okay.
That's it?
So we should be a little providing with that, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just phone call, show, answer, you know. Or give us a waiver. Or additional form.
Yeah, it's the same thing for my free throw and stuff. It's easy to get. Good?
So that's about it.
That's good news.
Okay. All set, Kim? Thank you. Tom?
Um, no, I don't have anything to report, other than thank you to the voters for coming out and exercising their right. Appreciate it.
It's a mandate. It's a mandate. Okay, very good, thanks.
Okay, so I finalized the application to the Charles R. Wood Foundation, and we focused on the launch pad for the kayak canoe, and I requested $5,000. So the interesting piece with that grant is they wanted specifics as to who's covering the other portions of the request, you know, because it's supposed to be a portion of something. So I explained how we have had this whole, what's the word I want?
Revitalization?
Yeah, the revitalization plan, the plan drawn up. Plan is the word I wanted. It was a big word, and it took a while to come, but it came. So, you know, we've had a plan in, in place, and as we find grants or funds, we're moving forward with that piece. So one of the things I would like to do is probably sit down with you, Janet, and come up with a five-year plan, because as I find these grants, I can write a portion to address that. So there is another very large rolling grant through Lowe's, so Janet and I are going to go down and speak with them. And so we kind of want to get an idea of what areas in the revitalization do you feel are most important, and maybe list our top 10, and then, you know, that way we can get cost estimates of what it's going to be for each of those. So as I find a grant, I can just move into, to writing that. So there is the Lowe's grant that's available. There's also, I had talked to you, Janet, about the Wells Fargo. I didn't think it was the right fit, but for the research, once I entered initial information to get the application pulled up, it is for community revitalization in the northern area. So that does fit for us. And the same thing with the Kaboom Grant, which is usually a 50/50 type grant. They'll, you buy the equipment from them at reduced amount, but you're buying from them, and you supply in-kind and/or other grant funding towards that. But Lowe's works in combination with Kaboom, again, once I got past those first blockades, got that information that that might be a good fit for us. So I think we need to identify exactly what we want to ask for and look for in the grants. Because what I'm finding with them, there's three main categories that seem to be the biggest amount of grants available is health and fitness, of course, children, which is the second biggest one, and then community arts. All right? So some of the programs perhaps that you, you do, and then the music in the park, maybe next year we take a look at the wood, because that's initially what he started the grant funding for was the arts. That was a big piece for this family. So if we figure on projecting, you know, those kinds of arts and activities, whether we have a rolling art program for the kids and then the music in the park, I think by planning well in advance of what those things are, knowing that that really is some of their components. And they go way up there in their funding. I know we're a very tiny community, but they gave us 2,500 back in 2013. Been a while. See, I thought it was only like two years ago. Long time ago, five years.
It does.
It does. So, you know, I think that we can take a look at what we want to move for, just like with our equipment, with anything, there are grants, and if we can figure out with this revitalization, revitalization plan, what we want to attack with these little grants. I mean, because every little bit helps and can, you know, whittle away. You know, the one thing is the, the water splash pad, you know, roughly around five grand for us to do all the work. And just order the parts and the plan. But I think with proper planning, there's enough people in our community with, with volunteering that will definitely want to assist in, in stuff like that. And then we get the in-kind portion, when you get all the volunteers and you figure the man hours, that all rolls into these grants. But I, I think we need to have a good plan in place of what direction you want to go, because sometimes I'll find a grant and there's like no time left to write it, just because I stumble upon it, and so I like to know what that plan is, so that then we move in and hit the next thing. So that being said, we did get money for the one bench that did arrive. So my question with that is, do you want me to find other grants to purchase other benches for the Paquette Park? Currently, there are four down there. Do we really need to have four? I'm thinking two is more than adequate. But do you want to do that pursuing with grant money or just outright purchase with extra funds that, that are there? So that's another piece to, to think about. Fitness in the Park Grant went away, but I found some other money, so you can get from somewhere, that I don't want to announce, because I don't want anyone else taking it before I can get it. So, ah, did you like the Fitness in the Park, and what would you like me to seek of what we did last year? What would you like to see? Or do we want to, give me your thoughts on that?
The hip hop dance.
Okay.
So popular.
Okay, alright.
It's unfair for me to comment, I didn't attend that event.
Okay, awesome, and is that time, do we wanna do it a little later in the evening, or?
That was done around ten or eleven in the morning.
Yeah, you had a morning and you had an afternoon one, we had two hip hops, didn't we?
No.
No, we had two, the type one.
They were consecutive, they were like at eleven and twelve.
Right, that's right.
Um, it seemed pretty good, I mean, there were a lot of kids there.
Okay.
We do some stuff we can do during the.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Can we make it so it doesn't interfere with the swimming?
That's gonna be tough.
Well, if we had ten or eleven, it wasn't an issue, although we did do it, oh, we did it where it didn't hit the swim time.
Oh, we did it earlier, we did it in June, didn't we?
We did it earlier.
Yeah, we did it end of June, the week before swimming started, so that would be good if we could do that.
Yeah, in between, that week.
Yeah, that would be really good.
Okay. Alright, so I'll see, first of all, if she's even available to do it. Um, and then, request.
Yeah, that young woman, Maddie, that came was very, very good with the kids.
Okay. Okay. And that is it for me, any questions?
No, but thanks for all the work on all of that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of benches, I think we, if, if two is the amount.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, do you feel like two or three, or?
So, so one was four forty-five, I'm not sure what the shipping was on it, cause it was purchased directly from.
I don't know, I didn't research the.
The H I grant. So.
There's four on the park. But they're in bad shape.
They're gonna go.
Yeah.
They all have to be removed, so we need the other one soon.
Would three balance out okay?
Yeah, because you're getting the, the benches in the inside of the gazebo that's on the.
The warrant.
Warrant. So, you know, we'll have those benches, so I think if we just get one more to balance it out visually, right?
I think maybe two. Oh, get one more, so we have two.
Get one more, so we have two.
So we have two?
Yeah, two.
Right.
And we still have the table with the cement chairs there.
Okay.
Okay.
Just gotta fix that one board.
We've got, I think, I think we've got new boards for that table that's down there that's gonna to change out.
I think we can get one more through the playground fund.
Okay, alright, so I won't look for a grant for that?
Yeah.
Or use the ones I have here for that.
We have, we do that one here?
We can?
How much do we have in there?
Need a resolution for that, or just go ahead?
Three thousand maybe?
Yeah, yeah. You know how much the bench is?
They're four hundred and forty-five, but I don't know what the shipping is.
Yeah, we don't know.
Probably a hundred something, check the trailer.
It was what?
They come by trucks, you're probably looking at a hundred, about a hundred and some dollars shipping.
I don't know what, what the last one was.
I don't know, over here.
I don't either, I can find out, I'll ask her what the shipping was on it.
Just let mine even know, please.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, uh, need a motion to go out of the regular meeting?
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to go into public hearing for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget?
So moved?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, budget workshop, everyone comfortable with what we talked about last week, two weeks ago?
Yep.
Excuse me, maintaining the tax rate. Water rates is still a little flexible, as is the wastewater rate, but I think when we talked about the fifteen and a half percent raise across the board, I think that's going to have to be so that we can make this budget work, but uh, I would rather not vote on new rates tonight. I'd rather vote just on the budget. Uh, and we'll see what the discussion entails with, with the town representative on Wednesday forenoon. I would really like to see that money for operation maintenance, because that will have a, a huge effect on the overall water rate. I mean, that money is in the IMA, but that's whatever. So, if you are comfortable with the budget that we have, with the general fund, maintaining the tax rate, using, I think, an extra twenty thousand, I think we used almost fifty thousand a year last year. It's up to about seventy thousand this year from the general fund, fund balance. I think we're very comfortable there, I think we can. My concern is not the general fund, my concern is water and wastewater, I'll be terrifically honest with you.
I think we share that.
So, since there is no one here, if you are comfortable with the budget, I entertain a motion to approve the budget for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Well, for better or for worse, I'll let you do this part. Motion to command of the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to go back to regular meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This stuff, this legal stuff is pretty demanding. Okay, have a report from the Treasury, please?
Everyone has their expense and revenues for March. I think we're pretty much on target.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not over till the beginning, is it?
This we go through at this time every year. You know, we we look at the funds and we look at what we have left and what we spent. Hopefully we have a, you know, enough to roll it over and make, make good on everything. I think we're in fine shape. May not roll over as much as we have in the past, but we'll meet our demands and we'll make our payments. Want your transfers, want to hear?
Um, no, we also, we have water and sewer billing. Water was sixty thousand, zero, twenty-nine, eighty-six. And sewer was seventy-one thousand, one, sixty-seven, fifty-seven.
That's about what they've been running along, close.
Yeah, and what we budgeted, um, I think our water is um, down nineteen hundred and sewer is sixteen hundred, so it's pretty close.
Yeah.
Transfers?
Yeah.
Um, we have to transfer the, as you see our winter was longer than usual, um, to A fifty-one, forty-two point two, snow removal equipment. Two thousand, oh no, I meant that, that's not what, that one there is. We had to have our plow truck repaired. That's what that repair is. A fifty-one, forty-two point two, snow removal equipment, twenty-four hundred and fifty dollars from A fifty-one, forty-two point four, snow removal contractual. The next one is our personnel for snow removal, A fifty-one, forty-two point one, one thousand three hundred and sixty from A fifty-one, ten point one, street maintenance, personal services. Next one to A thirteen, twenty-five point eleven, NICOM schooling, eight hundred dollars from A ninety, ninety, forty point eight, workers comp. And the last one is A fourteen, ninety point two, public works administration, one thousand twenty-five dollars from A fifty-one, ten point four, street maintenance contractual.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion here?
Mike, I just have a question with the, the snow removal, obviously we've had tons and tons of snow. Do we implement the winter hours at all for at least the morning portion of staff coming in earlier for plowing and they leave earlier? As dictated in the policy procedure? Now, so when you call them in early, we're paying overtime for that?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to make some decisions here because it is in the policy and procedure for that early morning hour.
It was also changing the workdays. Having Monday and Tuesday off and working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, so we need to make a decision here if we're going to move forward with how that is stated, which would help with the cost and the reality of the situation.
I think you save a lot with yourself, I will tell you that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of times you're out of the way with them, you know?
Yeah.
That's. But however you guys wanna do it, it's probably the, the only time they're, they're, they, it's included is when they're on call on that morning. They lose their own call if they come in. Or on, on Friday nights, but other than that, nobody will call them in early. I mean, they don't get, they get whatever they call them, we usually try to do it at six, get one hour. They don't get, you know, a two-hour call if they're just in junk mail or shift. But they don't go home early, unless they ask, you know, come, come, do you mind if I leave early then, but not very often. They get paid overtime for that.
Right, so, I mean, we could avoid that portion because it is built in to, to do that for the money. I understand weekends and, and nights, we can't project that, obviously.
Well, their on calls are just weekends, as far as their on calls go.
Right, but you say they go home from work on Friday and we get the snow, which seemed to be par for course regularly, right? Friday night and Saturday and Sunday, then we got the snow. But the morning hours where that overtime can be avoided, because they do have to get cleared before the buses get on the road. I think that we should next year really make a decision to, to stick to that, for that, that portion of, of the time. That would help for that piece.
So just from Monday through Friday?
Right.
Which is that?
So, whatever we end up deciding, it is there and it's in the, the policy and procedures. So, either we take it out or we go with it.
Make it work. Okay.
But usually if they come in early, then they go out again before they leave in the afternoon.
Well, there's, one person goes out, so.
Yeah.
But they're saying one person in the morning and then one person.
Person in the afternoon.
In the afternoon. Usually there's not somebody on call as far as during the week, it's weekends only, that's the only.
Everybody done with that now?
Is that policy conflict with the labor agreement, with the?
No.
Okay.
No. Goes along with it. Okay, we'll look at that. We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, to approve the.
Transfers.
Transfers. Roll call, please?
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the warrant?
We have additional invoices in the amount of six thousand eighty-seven thirty-one for a total warrant of of seventeen thousand nine ninety-seven sixty-two.
Trustee Perez is spent on.
Yep. Yeah, all good with the drift period though?
I used it once, we did it all with the one ton. Seven trips to the tank, you've seen it.
One of the times. Yeah, I saw you up there.
We've only used it once, actually after we went Oak Street, we drifted on the site, after we brought it back, we haven't used it at all. Still under the same, but I mean.
I don't know how that one business, local business, gonna stay open if you only spend three dollars and sixty cents a month.
That's because Keith's not working now.
Hopefully we're done with it.
Alright, motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion here?
Just a technicality, the additional warrant was six thousand one hundred eighty-four twenty-three.
Yeah, cause you had that ninety-four ninety-two.
Right, for total.
Six thousand one hundred.
Eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents for a total of, your total was correct. Just the ninety-four ninety-two wasn't added into your six thousand amount.
Thank you.
Gotcha, might as well correct it now, then later.
Alright, so the total warrant seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please, if there's no further discussion.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Turn to Mike.
Uh, I got nothing for you.
Well, I'd like for you to explain this.
There's, where our GPS, there's a, um, it's called Diamond Maps and it's a mapping system to put all our GPS points in. So, then you put it in layers, as you put all your fire hydrants where they are, you put all your water shut offs, your curry boxes, and actually you can go out, even with your cellphone, uh, and you can, with a cellphone, you can get like three feet from them. So if you have them in there, it runs off GPS, you can go to where you are to find whatever you're looking for, you put all your, your water lines. It's a, it's a mapping system, it's cloud-based, it's got two servers and it saved that. And what it is, basically, you put all your, your infrastructure or whatever it may be, there's a lot of other things you can do with it, you can do work orders, do whatever, but it's a, it's cloud-based, so that way it's saved. It was made, there's a fellow that did it, made it for smaller municipalities. To sign up and be able to use it, it's nineteen dollars a month. If we sign up for it, doesn't matter how long we have it, the price doesn't go up, it stays at nineteen dollars a month for one user. They give a user password, if I'm using it, I can give it to the other guys, but if somebody else logs on, it kicks the other person off. But I'm, I'm, I, actually I started, they gave me a, a trial run, we went to a, a class in, in, um, Peru. And they, they were there and I was one of the speakers, but I started to do it, I've got all the hydrants in street view where all the hydrants are in the, as far as, that's one of the layers. I don't dare to put too much into it, that way, because I'm in trial view, put all the information in there and else and you lose it. So I'm, uh, I'd like to know if, uh, if the board would be willing to spend nineteen dollars a month to use that service. And the thing with them, you can export and make maps, so you have maps. This company doesn't hold you hostage when you, if you don't, if you just wanna stop using it, you can export all your stuff and you have it, it's yours. So it's not, cause some of the, some of the places you have it done, whether it be engineers or whatever, they'll put it in a different format and it's theirs where you can't get the information and that's not how it is through this company.
Do we have that now?
No.
No?
We've got all our points, we don't have, we don't have any kind of mapping software to have it where it's like cloud-based, no. That's something usually you pay, and it, and it goes, and this.
In the water project.
Supposed to get an ASB build map.
Yeah, we don't, we don't even have, um, the, Bernier-Carr is supposed to be making his maps, cause Kaseya was supposed to make ASB builds and that didn't happen, so Bernier-Carr took all the points that I gathered
Yep.
and are gonna try to build us a map. Um, but there's still a lot more points that need to be found and if this lines in the ground, I don't know how you're gonna find them. Some of the stuff you can shoot, but some of it you can't, there's still a whole bunch of points they need before they can make us maps. But this is not just for that, this is for anything you wanna put in there, whether it be street signs, whether it be, you can use it for sidewalks, you can use it for trees, you can, it's unlimited how much storage or how much you wanna put into it. Usually the basic layers are your, your hydrants, your valve boxes, uh, your water mains.
Yeah.
All this stuff, you know, and you can layer, you can layer it, but you can use it for, for whatever. But we have no ASB builds yet for this project.
But you have all the, the GPS points that you didn't.
All the ones that I gathered, I have, there's some that, they just put lines in and I wasn't able to go or the, nobody got points to that, so those lines, I mean, you're gonna guess where they are probably, they're gonna try to locate, what they're gonna try to do is they're gonna try to clamp on like a hydrant and follow it and mark, put flags down and then go back and shoot where the line is on some of them and just fill out them.
With the new lines?
Yeah. We, we were supposed to get ASB builds from the contractor, the contractor didn't do any ASB builds, so.
Okay, so what are we doing about that?
At this point, there's nothing we can do, the, the engineers are supposed to be working on an ASB build map for a final production for us. That the contractor was supposed to do.
Will it include all of those points?
Only everything I gathered.
All the ones that he has.
Through this whole project.
Okay, so legally, why? Okay, so legally, why are we not, I mean, these are the things we need to go after with our money is.
That's done.
Baloney, I'm sorry, but w- we can't just sit back and say, well, they didn't do it, so what are we gonna do? Well, this piece of dung is still out there doing business, it's wrong, guys. I mean, this, we have to step up and say, no.
You're right, but how much are you willing to spend on legal fees when it's been done before?
I mean, we have these new water lines and we can't identify where they are, that seems insane to me.
We can identify anything that I put in there as we went.
That you, yes.
That's the only thing that they have, that's the only thing they have, what I gave them. Points that I gave them, it's all that, I collected all that information as went along, I spent a lot of time.
Yeah.
But sometimes if I wasn't here or gone and they did a string of lines and they didn't call me to to shoot points, wherever they get, they cruise going all over. Then those points got missed and they never got captured, so the only way for me to do is go back and try to trace services back to the main, find the main, then try to shoot.
Do we, do we have all the valves at least?
Got most of them, don't have all of them, the valves, that's easy to find, valves. Uh curb stops, easy to find, I know where most of all the curb stops are, but it's gonna be your mains underground, you know, any change of direction. That stuff there, and some of it wasn't, the plan showed it should be supposed to be built this way, but they just put the stuff in where they wanted, but how they felt. So that's not true to what is, it's not an ASB. You know, anything that changed the direction, that wasn't, if it wasn't captured or whatever, then those, how do you get that back?
But we have a contract, I mean, what is the point of a contract?
We had, had, that's done.
It didn't mean much when we had it.
No, we got very little support from the engineering group. And then when the negotiations took place with the, negotiations took place with the bonding company. That stuff was not included, a lot was not included, some of it was the hookups and restoration, stuff like that, but. When that was negotiated and those agreements were signed, that stopped the process right there. So we still have things that are coming from the engineers, the ASB builds that they're working on. Uh, I expect that we will get all of the papers associated with this project. All of the books that the inspectors had, all of the paperwork, all of the disc, all of the whatever's extras. That accumulated over the course of this project should be forwarded to us.
At the very least, is there anything further that that can be done with the Attorney General's office though? So that this person doesn't continue getting contracts?
Well, he's just gonna change his name as he's done in the past. He will change the name of the company, he will change the owner owners of record and continue.
And part of that agreement that was not to do that, wasn't it?
Well, not, no, there was, really wasn't anything under under Cassell Construction. He could change, he could go on and and change his. Name from there to.
That's what they do.
Cassell Maintenance or Cassell Landscaping or Cassell, you know.
A lot of Cassells down there and all the.
A B C, you know.
That's that part, is another community will be stuck in the same situation as us.
Just like the one for us.
Yeah, I I think that.
You gotta think of those better and you got no choice.
I know.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Even though you knew from the get go that it was gonna be bad.
Track record, track record.
Back in the research period, that.
Didn't matter.
We raised the red flag.
They were bonded, they were bonded, no problem.
And the bonding company stated they had never had any problems with this organization in the past.
That's because that organization was maybe under a different name?
Well, I mean, it's Liberty Mutual is a pretty big name.
No, I mean.
No, no, no. Company, not not the insurance company.
Not the contractor.
It's a common practice.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, I mean, we were told repeatedly, the village and the town, bonding company will take care of everything. There was never any mention of negotiations, there was never any mention of, we'll pay this much or that much, or this much or over or under or whatever. And the negotiations did not go well, so I'll just leave it at that because I. I won't get into names and pointing fingers here. And we are not the lead agency, so we don't get to determine where this money is going to get spent. We can have a say in it, as we will, but.
So.
Draw your own conclusions on that one.
Yeah, so with all, with all that said, this would be a useful tool for you, especially in the.
Yes, and it doesn't, doesn't matter if you do it for the year or if you do it, you, they they can do it, charge a credit card monthly, it's still the same price. There's not, you know, even if we wanted to say, yeah, let's do it, and then if, you know, maybe if she wasn't around, maybe this is not really what I thought it was. You know, nineteen dollars times a couple of months, but I'm sure, looking at, I've I've been going through it, I started to play with it, and I'm sure that'll be. It's gonna be useful.
Do they give you a discount if you pay for the year, cause they know a lot of companies will give you like a twenty percent discount?
This guy made this for small municipalities, cause usually it's made for, usually if you have a cat department and you get into this, it's hugely expensive. They do it so they look at the, they can do it two ways, they can look at the total number, I think, of of water users a district, and it's so much money a year. Or it's nineteen bucks per user, after I think it's like three users, then it's 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 just a set fee for the whole. And that's so multiple people, you know, one's got a cellphone, or somebody's out looking for valves, or somebody's out, they can pull it up on a tablet, on a on a laptop, on whatever. You can pull it up, with this, it gets you within three feet, which is still, metal is after you'll find what you're looking for. You're taking a field full of snow, you gotta go find a valve, um, it all looks the same, and that's where. But that you can even share with, say, a contractor, they can't adjust anything, but they can look at it, they've got a a. A building going in, they want to do with a water sewer, you can share that, you can share that with them.
This will make your life a lot easier.
Single use, but through multiple, cause you can have unlimited users, so you can actually share, and it's only good for thirty days. Once that thirty days is up, they can't view it anymore.
Is there?
So they set it up so contractors can use it, they have, you know, a project going in.
Is there a contract where you're gonna be limited to, or locked into?
No, no competitive, it's by the month, you can pay by the year, you can pay by the month, and it's, whatever you sign up, the prices when you sign up. That's what it is for the lifetime you have here, if we have it for ten years, it's nineteen bucks a month for the next ten years, they won't raise the price. It actually is, I printed one section sheet, I just don't wanna print too many, this is my own, but you guys can look it over. You can watch, they got tutorials online and.
Looks like an extremely valuable program.
But you can use it for work orders, you can use it if you change a service rod, you wanna, you could put notes in there, I change it on this date, what you put. I mean, it's all can be, each thing you can use for, I mean. All your, uh, you can even do, generate work orders with it, maintenance records. I mean, you name it, you can put equipment, you can put, as far as lift stations or, uh, there's a, anything you can get a point on. You can actually use it, and people do the trees, the year of the trees, what kinda trees, sidewalk, signs, sign maintenance. Uh, schedule, what you have for inventory, you wanna look, see how many stop signs, you put in stop signs, it tells you exactly how many you got, where they are. I mean, anything you wanna put in there, and it's unlimited as far as storage, how much information you wanna put in. And it is stored, like you say, in two cross, ones in Utah, ones in wherever, but it's totally. This way, if something happens, it's always backed up.
And you wanna use it for what, just water, or water and waste water?
Everything, put our sewer lines in there, put our water lines, if we gotta go find, uh, you know, manways and you, you put right in, you can get distance between. Like for, I gotta renew again my flushing program because, um, I'm gonna have to very shortly here do our spring flushing.
Yeah.
I gotta redo our whole flushing program again, because now we have two tanks we're drawing off of, so I had to do it last year with all the new lines.
The new directions.
But now, coming from two directions, I gotta redo the whole plan again, so like this, if I had. They helped me last time, but I was actually have to measure out between every hydrant. To know the distance, the diameter, the type of pipe and the distance, to to know exactly how long you gotta flush every.
Can can this do that?
You can, you can, um. I haven't got that far into it yet, I didn't, won't dare to put too much into it and then lose all the time I spent, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, um, but that's how the the flushing goes, the diameter, and you need to know the distance and linear length. And that's how many seconds you have to flush, and how many pounds tells you how much water you use and how much, cause you don't wanna underflush. And you don't wanna overflush, cause you're wasting.
Yeah.
So that's, there is a, um, like a, that you can put your, but you need to know those distances, you need to be able, you need to be able to get that. But you can streamline on the maps, it's, uh, you know, it's a, you know, satellite maps, you can get it to hydrant, and you can do a distance and know.
That's what I was wondering, if you do it on, using the GPS?
I have, I shouldn't say yes, I'm pretty sure you can, I haven't did that part of it yet. Um, I didn't map any of the regular lines out yet, so I'll get it start by the hydrants, start by our curb stops. Because what I'd like to do is take our, all the points I have, and you can import them onto here. So all the points I already have will be imported, each in one individual in, I've been using it for, um. We've got a lot of the meters we put in, the GPS coordinates weren't right, to know where they were, I don't know how, but somehow they got changed. Somebody helped us, and they, some of them, linear length, they all went to the same GPS coordinate for all the, a lot of them went to the same, so I've been finding them on here. Cause you can bring, move the map and it shows the GPS coordinates, and I've been changing, putting them in an Excel spreadsheet, so Mary can download when we have all the. Coordinates back to where every water meter radio is. But other than that, it's hard to, unless you go out to every house with a handheld and get the coordinate and then put it in. I was able to do it, pick the houses, go right on the map, pick the house, and then put the coordinates on your spreadsheet.
What would you like, Mike?
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to. I don't know how long, if I wanna do it for a year, the diamond maps, we'll do it for a year and see, um, and I can do that. I can set up so it's billed monthly, so if you wanted to do it that way, doesn't matter either way, if it's done monthly or yearly, it's the same price anyways.
I think we should do a a one year trial period, pay for it for a year, we can always withdraw. But it looks like a valuable service.
You probably, down road, we may see that, it, we may want more users than, rather than withdrawing. You may find that, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
But we can see, um, what that would be, but at least we can start with one, for now, we can share it. You know, we get the information on there and be able to use it. I just hate to put all the information in and we don't do it in a.
Yeah.
You got too much, you got too much stuff out there.
Well, I see it as valuable too, I just wish we would have that.
Well, from from burning a car, I'll get maps, paper maps.
Right.
But you're still, it's not, it's not something, you're gonna bring them.
Well, no, that's why I say this is, this is better, cause you can, you can go out in the field with your cellphone.
Cellphone, whatever.
That we, we never would have gotten regardless, depending the ASB builds or not.
Or you have to bring your GPS with you.
Yeah.
And that's, that's to a tenth of an inch, but still, the, if one of the other guys had to set it up and use it. They may not be able to where it's easy with a the tough pad or with a laptop, take it with you.
Well, depending what you're looking for, sometimes three feet's probably fine, if you need to get that close because of other infrastructure. And, no, I, I make a motion to.
I think we should.
A one year trial.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think it's valuable, I think it's.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Anything else, Mike?
No, we're just, I'm standing, cause we gotta, we put a ton of coal patch down already, filled some of the potholes. Uh, this week's, we're gonna be working inside and maybe by the end of the week, you'll obviously, parking lot in front dug up probably. Start digging up that thing.
Go back over that.
Already, sorry, they already started jackhammering the floor out of the ground.
Did we start that?
Today they started jackhammering, breaking this now out. I'm gonna have to see if we can rent a small machine, mini, or have somebody come with a mini, because you gotta dig inside, I don't even know, do it with, our machine's gonna be too tall.
Plus, plus we have to rent one?
Uh.
Or or do you have somebody in mind?
Depending on price, I guess, and hopefully it doesn't take, I mean, I I'd like to see if I could sneak in with ours and then. But it depends what we find, if we find stuff in here, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be loaded in a truck and all, and we take it out. I'm not so worried so much as far as that one, it's the one out here that I'm more concerned about.
So the the plan of attack, we get a hole and let them test first before you do anything?
Yeah, you want it to wait, but I took, we started, we saw a cut, we started j- uh, jackhammering the concrete out, you're gonna take the concrete out.
Yeah.
The whole center bay, um, and then they'll come and test as we have, as they dug it, wants, wants it to be dug to the bottom of the pit.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Our concern is, is the one in the back, not so much the pit over here.
Well, this one over here, can't you really get a machine in, how you gonna get a machine in in truck to take it out, so he said we're not gonna worry about that one. So he's having us do the center bay and saw cut this, and when he comes, I'll start digging this. It's supposed to be like two and a half feet deep outside.
They can't even drill here and take like core samples or something, find out what we're dealing with?
No, because the machine, we can't pick the core machine, we can't drill, can't sample, they told me the machine won't, the mass won't block.
Too low, too low the ceiling.
Yeah. So we'll dig outside, it's supposed to be two and a half feet, two and, under three feet, it's supposed to be the top of the tank, supposedly. Tanks twelve to fifteen feet, you figure, and if there's any liquid in it, then everything changes, then you gotta. Who knows why, you probably close the place down. Depending what they find, if there's any liquid, you gotta pump it out, it's gonna be, hasn't mattered with the tank, and then you gotta take the soil out until there's no more. I mean, I don't know.
Well, based on what you've always found downstream, it's probably have to, have to break a lot of these, the whole rear end.
Yeah, I don't know, where do you start?
We have to remediate to the driveway.
The driveway, we own type of it.
Well, it's halfway across, I'm assuming. We don't have to go beyond that.
Twelve, fifteen feet deep against a building, I mean, that's a lot of material.
Yeah.
And you don't know how far, I don't know how far does the state own here, they must own it up to the building, you know? Yeah.
Right away, must.
Right away.
Must be at least thirty five feet from the center line this way.
So that part we don't have to touch, right?
Don't think so.
Have to find out with the state railway is here, get that measured out.
Don't have to touch the state railway?
I don't know.
That probably comes within fifteen, twenty feet of the building.
The tank's like this far from the building, and that's where our sewer line goes out, goes out around the corner, I think, our sewer's in the back here. So I'll probably be digging, depending how deep we gotta go.
Right, but if there was contaminated soil right out to to the street, you're saying within that railway, it's their responsibility?
I wouldn't think it'd be our, I don't think it would be our responsibility, but I don't know if we, I don't know how that work, cause you gotta get it from permits to dig in that area.
Right.
You know, other than fixing a water break or something like that, I should find out with the railway how far back it is.
Yeah.
Well, ATL should know that.
Yeah.
Thirty five from the uh, center line of the road, probably get you halfway in the parking lot at least.
The tank is normally like three feet from the building, it's only about that far from the building, according to their picture. And it's only, it's not very wide, but it goes all the way from the edge of the asphalt to that first door that goes upstairs.
Yeah, they probably use very big tanks back then.
Enough to cause problems.
Probably a few thousand gallons, at most.
But I guess we'll see once we dig down.
It's smelling here, I'm sure.
We'll see, uh, he may come up Friday. Uh, I'm gonna try to call him tomorrow, he was supposed to call me today, but he didn't, so I'm gonna call him tomorrow. I wanna, I just wanted to get some of that chisel down the back, spend less time.
So I'll see if it's up.
Yeah, it's a pit, that's a pit, they filled it in, they must have put the rain in there, there's walls, poured walls in there, going in the center.
Yeah.
So it must originally been a pit, and then they put a slift in maybe instead and filled it in. The pipe in the floor, I think it's an air, it's only half inch galvanized, it goes down and that's what ran the, must be air to the cylinder. We didn't dig down, so I don't know if there's any, or no, I guess I won't tell.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second? Go with a one year program to, with this, uh. With this layering.
We already voted.
You've already voted?
We're already been on that.
Alright. Anything else, Mike?
No.
Not till they wanna hurry, it's just.
No, we're good.
Any good questions for Mike? Eat him enough for the night, or just?
I think so.
Okay, to the correspondence, please.
Correspondence from Stewart's of the Holiday Match Grant, correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding profile in public health. Correspondence from Assemblyman Billy Jones, correspondence to the US Department of the Interior. Regarding sea lamp re-control program. Regarding sea lamprey control program, corresponds from Clinton County Health Department requesting a community liaison from the village. Correspondence from Code Officer Tetra to Burnier, to David Burnier. Who noticed a violation to Curtis Latimore, or Curtis Labarge. From Atlantic Testing to Schedule Excavation Monitoring Investigation.
So I have a question on number four, um, for the sea lamprey, is that for the river? It didn't state in this notice, anything particular.
It's, it's for, it's for maiden laying the flood. Laying that's down there, but because that property's owned by the village and it's near the river. They have to, just have to make sure that you don't, nobody's using the water on that property and.
Okay, and they are going to let us know when they're going to do this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Don't they usually start up river, by the dam?
I had the same, I had the same notice at my house.
I think so, yeah.
I think that's where they start, let it flow down.
Oh, the bike racks, yeah, so. Yeah, well, why don't you talk about it, you know all the details, so Anita did a bu- a lot of research on, um, bike racks.
On the bike racks, we did, I did three different quotes that we got, um. The only thing is, is that the shipping is really expensive, it's like a hundred and eighty-one dollars, depending on where you. Went anywhere from eighty-one, a hundred and eighty-one dollars to three hundred and something for two bike racks. Um, also researched a different color other than black. If we got, Jan thought maybe we would get a purple, if we got purple, they were three hundred and eight dollars apiece, and with shipping would be nine hundred and twenty-two dollars for two. This is the same company that does them for Home Depot. Um, we can order two bike racks, uh, uh, from Home Depot for three hundred and ninety-six dollars and change, with free shipping. Um, for five rack, for, for five bikes, two of them. But the only difference is they're black.
Okay.
So for four hundred dollars, we can order two.
A lot of Kansas City for that difference.
Yeah.
So we got five hundred in grant money, so it'll be three hundred of the.
Corrected. It's three hundred and ninety-six and change, I don't have it corrected, but, um, so we're, it's gonna take. It takes like three to four weeks to get them, so. So that's what we're gonna use that Stewart's grant money to do.
And then I did forget to officially thank Stewart's Grant, so, you know, for people who understand that Holiday Match, when they've got those buckets out and ask you to drop your change. Uh, they contribute over two hundred million, two million dollars every year to, um, communities, and they've been generous with us every single year.
Very generous.
So, thank you to Stewart's, um, for what they do for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're a good company.
So I would say we just go with the black and order those too.
Yeah, me too.
Did you figure out the tax thing?
Um, no, I'm just gonna do it like Thursday.
And you were struggling with that Thursday?
Yeah. I'm just gonna do it like.
Okay. Verba.
Okay, if we go back to correspondence, we have a volunteer for this, uh, community liaison with the Clinton County Health Department.
I would do it if no one else wants to. But if someone else.
Number five.
Liaison will be a community champion who advocates for physical activity opportunities for residents of all ages and abilities. Liaison and the Health Department staff work together to encourage active lifestyles. Each and I will compensate liaison partners for time spent on activities such as. So, get paid.
Oh, wow.
Free water testing.
What's that?
Free water testing.
Okay.
I, I'll do it.
All right, thank you. So.
I'm sure the pay is huge.
Will you, or we can contact a Sierra Naspickel? And let her know. And I wanted to, also with the, with the, uh, spectrum timer thing. Do you want me to call the Public Service Commission and have them come up again like they did last time?
Um, let, let me go through it first, let me look at it, I wanna try to find the last one that we did.
Okay, we have that on file.
Okay, I probably got it in my briefcase somewhere, some of those things I never throw away.
I mean, that was, I thought it was helpful to have that lady come up and talk to us about what our expectations could be and. What our demands could be.
And if I remember correctly, she came up like five o'clock or something.
Yeah, it was, it was early evening. And she spent, what, a couple hours with us, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
And then we can, if you want, uh, you wanna send that guy an email. Informing him that you and Jared will be sitting down with him, and we are scheduling a meeting with the. Or would like to schedule a meeting with the Public Service Commission to go over. Uh, it says in there fifteen years, I think that's a bit much.
I do too. Oh, yeah. What did we do last time?
Was it ten?
Ten. It was ten?
I mean, if you want it, if you're more comfortable with five, go with five, I don't know if they will, but that would be a question with the Public Service Commission.
Fifteen years on anything like this is a long time.
And if you wanna look at the percentage, if you wanna, remember we had that discussion? I mean, it's either zero or up to five. Uh, why don't you just got a pretty good idea about the revenues that come back here? You know, is it, you know, the consumer's gonna pay for it anyway.
Yeah.
I don't think we should hit them too hard.
Uh, do you see what the cable rates are?
What's that?
I said, if you see what the cable rates are.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, they come to put line and bring fish tape or.
I know. And they don't bargain anymore.
No.
Yeah.
It is what it is, if you don't like it.
You do what we do.
Okay, anything else for the correspondence? All right, old business, um, the blowers in the I M I study, I haven't had any news from. Mister Fletcher as to where that is, uh, where that is at this point, but I'm sure they are moving ahead. Water rates, we've already discussed, we're gonna hold up until the May meeting. New threat program, we're gonna schedule a meeting with the town officials, uh, and talk about some of the factors. We still have not come to a conclusion on what our share of this is going to be.
Okay.
Because of the issue that's still up in here about, excuse me, about maintaining fields. We have a look at a budget, am I right? We got a revised budget from our corresponding village, and, uh, that was included in there. So we wanna meet with the town officials and come up with a action plan, because I'm not gonna pay that.
Yeah, I mean, we're already paying eighteen percent more than what we use.
Yeah, I, I just can't see us making that commitment.
You're right, we should renegotiate our portion. If they wanna go that route, we can go that route.
Yeah, and there's also, we haven't received an adequate explanation as to where the, a town contribution goes. Uh, that has not been adequately explained to us, to the town and to the village or champagne, so. That is another factor. Atlantic Testing Laboratories, uh, they have been in contact, Mike has talked to them, obviously about. What we're gonna do back here, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, they told you to go ahead and take the floor out as much as possible and, and contact them, they will come down. It's unfortunate, but in this situation, you have to have a licensed, a licensed organization to handle these things.
You should.
So, we will get that taken care of, uh, that contract's been sent in. Uh, both with ATL and the subcontractors that they are going to have to do the testing. So we can, hopefully we'll have something in the next month, or at least by June, that we can, uh. We can look at more in depth, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of decisions which have to be made in the near future in regards to this whole process. I mean, the, the. These smells were very strong in here today.
Oh, they were today?
Today, because the guys were downstairs.
They didn't enjoy it, I mean.
It was when I walked in first, it was.
The only thing I can see is the cool air dropping in and bringing the paper.
Yeah.
If you go in here right now, doesn't smell out there.
No.
I don't know.
Is it gonna help closing up that sewer line and?
They're all done.
I know, but is that going to help with it?
I don't think that made a, I don't think, to be honest, I don't know if that made a difference.
Okay, how about that?
They plugged all the old sewer lines, and they had wooden poles and stuff to run, it capped them with the hydraulic cement.
And they're cracking the floor, that ditch in the floors, can we?
We can fill it.
But the only other option, according to the D E C guys, you gotta put plastic on the floors and on the walls, and you gotta hook up a, a ventilation fan and pump all that air outside.
Yeah, they had said that a year ago, that's, you know, that I think we've voted.
Mm-hmm.
But what, what's the, what's the plastic, what's the recommendation on that?
I don't know.
It's the plastic.
It's just to make it airtight, except for where it's pumping out doors. I'm sure you'd have to build it.
Floor's gonna drop, the water come through the walls, and the concrete, so it goes to the trough and runs to the sump hole.
I know.
You don't, down there after, it didn't smell down there. I don't, it's not here, but it didn't smell down there, maybe it makes sense.
What if we redo that and, um, put drainage, drainage pipe into the sump hole, then resew that? Would that seal it up?
Or are you gonna put, uh, cut all the floor out on the edge, do you mean?
Yeah, run drainage and then resew it over that.
Maybe, you'd have to go bring it to a sump hole and, and seal the sump hole.
Yeah.
So they have to forge the plastic, wooden frame of plastic, so you lower it.
Right.
But, you have to have the trough before, because the floor is a ditch, you know, so.
That's what I mean, so we, if we put, if we put drainage all the way around to direct everything to the sump hole, we could get rid of that crack and. Re-four over that, but it's something to talk to these, these guys about. To mention to the engineers that are doing this, would that help us? I'm sure there'll be a solution before this is done, how to seal it off, but.
They didn't buy anything.
That, that, and once we get rid, if we can get rid of the contamination, then we should stop the seepage.
Probably hoping like, not put a building in, but I would have done it.
Oh, that could be pretty.
The nice thing, where, well, nice thing, where it is, it's not where the basement walls are, so you have more and more stability. You know what I mean, over there, there's no basement on that side.
Yeah, true.
So that's.
True.
It's not as bad as if you were right close to where.
So it's from the corner of that basement out to north?
Yeah.
It's like right in front of the, the other last entrance?
Yeah, right on the edge of it, right on the edge of the, I'm trying to interrupt stairs, right on the left side of the door. From there to the edge of the asphalt.
Okay.
Greg.
So you're right, it is, it is gonna, it's helpful.
Do we have a contingency plan if, when they start doing all of this stuff, if it becomes horrid in here for these ladies working? Do we have a contingency plan of how we wanna handle that?
Yeah, he pulls trailer, come back, parking lot.
They're gonna move to your son.
I said they can use a meeting house. I, seriously, when we were talking about this earlier, um, I mean.
You go to my house, you just have to let the dog have to go to the bathroom.
I mean, if it gets to be really bad in here, they can't work in here.
No, I think we, I think that's a very generous offer.
Yes.
That we could use on a short-term basis. We'd have to run some. Get some cooperation from television and, or the telephone company and the cable company and. Uh, you know, temporarily run some lines there.
Thank you.
Uh, because, I, I got a feeling this is gonna get very nasty for kids.
Internationalated basement's not gonna be outside, but any place outside you dig, it's gonna, it's gonna smell outside.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we've had, well, we've had water, I mean, right over there, it can smell like loom's rope.
Which is just, I mean, these guys can't be working in here like that.
And it might be a good idea to.
So based on that, if the tank is empty.
Yeah, but there's, usually there's a tank, there's liquid.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, whether it's water, it's.
It's probably water.
Even, anything that's.
In it.
In it, it has to have a, it, it, once you find a tank, changes there, you've got liquid in it, and that's a horrible ball of wax, and then you have to call people in to make. Everything, listen to Stan stuff, then we're gonna build a berm out back, put plastic and put all the soil.
Even if that tank is running out, it's gonna have some, some liquid in it.
It has liquid in it, that's gonna stop, and you gotta get somebody in here to pump it out, just hold it properly, and then build a berm and, and. Pl- plastic out back, in the backyard, and put all the dirt, um.
Yeah, that makes sense, take it up from one place to bury it someplace else.
Well, you don't bury it, air it, but, you know, air it, but, and then I guess from that point, they decide whether it's, it gets airied enough to, to reuse or get disposed of, or is that to get hauled away somewhere? If you gotta haul it to away, it could be bad.
Very expensive.
Call that trick or treat or.
Yeah, we'd have to hire a person to haul it, haul the parts. Do that with the dirt.
Any further business come before the board? Did we cover everything in the organizational, everything's all covered?
Yeah.
Okay, then we will have entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.